Yeah, you can.
I didn't think that one, that's the one with the tour. What's the best? And go bring me a four-wheel drive. Lie down there, rent a truck, drive out. Put your camp right there on the beach. How would you drive that car? You're legit. You're there. I got there, got my truck rid of it. I run in fifteen minutes.
I like to see the range.
But he let me off the bed. First day of vacation. Now I can see that a bunch of them got stuck on the beach. That's why you want to specify mountains. You know, I said, I do not get a real one. So there was one thing we stayed at. Had like a naval base close to it. I like that one. I'm trying to say, Tom, there's lots of those.
There may be a little more.
I guess we see her saying, please, what they're gonna pay.
I want to give you.
That's what I thought. It's a lot with their stuff.
You know.
Mount.
Six of them. I can get them. Just gotta go get them. We're gonna take them back.
I need to get the rest of the. Go out there. They have one way out there. We do that every time we start. All right, sir, we're ready. Hardly. Not thirty-one yet.
I call this meeting Gorder. I guess we forego it. We don't have anything to do except get right to it. First item is insurance.
Do you add insurance to the agenda?
That's all right. Everybody, everybody good with that?
Met with Siren Benefits Committee last night. As I presented to you last month, Matt, who's our current consortium, school district. We've been approached about forming a new consortium. So we met with our Siren Benefits Committee. We previously, and we brought them final numbers tonight, or last night. They wrote in seven-oh to move to mask two. So is the name of the consortium. Rates are lower or comparable. It's not as big of a consortium. It's smaller, but they made that motion in seven-oh to move to mask two. We just need board approval to do that. Is there any questions I can answer for you? The same coverage is. It is a mercy-based plan. There are Cox options that would meet the premiums of what we are currently paying for Cox.
If we get in that, can we get out like the next year or is that?
We can't get out. We are out of that for five years. And they are aware of that. We are out of that for five years. So we would have, if we chose to move to a different place, we'd just have to look for another consortium or another provider, which we can. We're not locked in. It's a year at a time.
Anybody else got any questions? Need a motion to approve this mask two?
Yes.
On that. Bart makes the motion. Do we have a second? Dan seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried seven-zero. Next item on the agenda is school attorney. We have had, I guess you could say, several discussions about trying to do as much local as what we can. And we've always felt the need to have somebody that maybe was a little more in line with schools than our local attorneys might be. And we've really never moved on. There are no names that have ever been mentioned. And I've got to know or talk to John Spurlock a few times. And he represents, I think, eleven school districts. And does quite a bit of work for him, I guess. And he's a local. Well, he graduated from Ava High, grew up here all his life, graduated from here, went to law school. I think he's actually, he lives over around Branson. And he's a partner in the law firm in Springfield by the name of Kekk and Phillips Law Firm. Their rates are a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And I think we're paying two-hundred plus an hour now.
Depends on if you are dealing with the partner or the associate. But two-twenty-five would be a comparable rate.
And I think, if I hear correctly, I think Mr. Mekus is actually wanting to retire or kind of partially retired or whatever. And I would like to recommend for us to use John Spurlock as our school attorney.
Do we have some information on him? Do we have some information on him?
I don't have any information on him. What kind of information?
I'm just, you know, some kind of references or.
They don't give out references. Have you ever gone to an attorney and they gave you references or anything?
Well, I actually use Pat Kekk as an attorney. So I'm familiar with the office.
Okay.
That's what I was wondering. Like a letter.
I think, I think, I think Dr. Dial asked for references. And he actually emailed a couple of their clients when asked them. He said they don't, they don't give out, you know, the names of their clients.
Correct.
And he actually emailed a couple and asked if it would be okay to give them out. And they did not give him permission to do that. But, and he talked to another partner in the firm. And they said, we've, we've never gave references. And.
Yeah, I wasn't meaning references with hit the clients of the firm. I was just meaning like local partnerships or people we've worked with before. That's what, that's what I was getting at.
I mean, I think it's appropriate to ask, I mean, what, you know, what schools he's represented. I mean, as any attorney, I would think you'd want to, to find out what schools he represented. And then your superintendent could reach after those schools and see how they, you know, like working with them. I mean, I don't have anything against him. I just, I think if, if, I don't think that's unreasonable to request.
Well, the answer I received on that was that it is a protected biohull.
So I, I talked to John last Friday, and I like John a lot. I'll say that upfront. I mean, he was one of my kids. So I think the world of him. He told me he was currently representing nine school districts. And I said, John, I just, can I talk to a couple, just a couple of them before, before I, because I've changed attorneys in the past. Before I do that, before we make a change, I'd just like to talk to them. And he said that he and his partner had decided that they weren't going to give any names out. That's what he told me. I said, okay. Just, that was our conversation. I've talked to him three times over the last two weeks.
I was on the board when we switched to Tom Mekus. And we didn't require any references from him. None, zero.
Why did we switch to Tom Mekus?
Because we weren't getting the stuff done with the local ones we were using. And some of it was a little bit shady. It wasn't local Ava. It was local in the area.
It was one of those instances where we felt that we needed somebody a little more knowledgeable, maybe about school aspects.
But Tom has that reputation. I mean, that's all he, I mean, that's why we reached out to him was because that's what he does. He really loves it.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
He writes policies just like he must be.
Where, where I'm going with this is, you know, John's pretty much local. He's a young guy. And he, he's out there hustling. He's trying to work. Mekus is trying to retire. You know, his rates are a hundred and fifty an hour. This is two-twenty-five an hour. I mean, that's seventy-five dollars an hour. And we use one, we don't, how much have we used?
We spent five thousand dollars this year on attorney fees.
That's, that's not a lot compared to what we have spent in the past. I mean, I mean, we try to take contracts and things of that nature that any attorney can do over here around the square somewhere and do it.
Yeah, we do that. If we can keep it in town, real estate deal, you know, anything like that, we do here. We call them SBA every time we can. My only concern is special education law. That's a pretty specialized topic. You know, and there are, and I could, again, I'm not knocking John at all because I think the world of him. There are firms that that's all they do is, is school law. You know, and two of them have offices in Springfield. When you get into an OCR complaint or you have some special ed issues, it takes a highly specialized person. But that's what they do. They practice special ed law. That would be my only concern. Like I, he may know a lot about that. I haven't, I haven't talked to anybody he's worked with.
And, and we're not locked in on this anyway. I mean, we, we can, we can basically go to anybody we want to. If, if we took something to him and he wasn't knowledgeable about it, or he didn't feel that he could. That's the thing about an attorney. I mean, most attorneys can look at law, case studies and things of that nature, just like they do preparing for any other case. And that can become knowledgeable about it. But if he, I feel that if he didn't think he was knowledgeable enough to represent us or give us an opinion, he would tell us that and we could go elsewhere. I mean. So we, I'm, I'm not talking about a contract or anything. We don't have a contract with Mekus as far as I know.
Correct.
You know, he's, he's a local guy. He's seventy-five dollars an hour cheaper. And, you know, if we run into something that he can't handle, we can go elsewhere with it.
We don't pay a retainer to any attorney.
That's correct. Correct.
That was gonna be my question. If we were locked into using him on doing this, because now I'm, I agree with you. Keeping the tax dollars local is a good thing. Local void likes to support him, but I don't know if that should be the only criteria to hire somebody. But, you know, if we don't know anything else, we know, or I've talked to some other school board members and some other people in other districts that use Mekus. And they said, use him mainly because he's one of the best in the state with school law. So that's what I was gonna ask was, can we use him? I mean, can we try him? Do we, do we need a motion to do this? I mean, do we need action to do this or can we?
Because you're not paying, you're not paying a retainer.
Check.
Yeah. I mean, if, if you're asking me if there are times when we can use John, absolutely. And I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
Well, you know, I don't know if we need a motion or not, but I'd like to give him a shot at it. You know, if we run into something that, you know, he don't feel as knowledgeable about, I don't guarantee he'll tell you that he can't do it.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to do this or?
You're not entering into a contract with him, so you don't technically.
Is everybody good with that? I don't see any head checking.
It'll save the district some money.
I don't have a problem.
How often are you calling Mekus on special ed stuff? Because I don't remember.
Melissa does.
Quite often?
Uh, no, no. Two or three times a year. And it's not Tom. We actually, because Tom doesn't, it's a partner of his in the.
I know John's got, how many partners? Does John have? Ball, do you know?
There's three, three that I know of.
Okay.
Three that I know of. And, you know, I'm sure we'd get the benefit of all of them.
You do usually when you use one firm, you use an attorney. And different ones specialize in different issues. And I can't, I mean, I think our last bill.
I think the bills have been relatively low since we reorganized. They were pretty high before that.
So we had a couple of months there where we had some issues that we had to resolve. But we had one that was forty-four dollars. One was a hundred and twenty-two fifty, a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-seven fifty. There was. We call them SBA every time we do, because it's free.
It was like six, seven years ago or something like that. I don't know exactly how many years ago it was. There was some legal stuff that carried over from one year into the next. And in those two years, we spent eighty-one thousand dollars on legal.
Correct, yes. That was right as I got in.
So how do you feel about it, Mr. Dalton? Since Mr. Dial will be, Dr. Dial will be gone and you'll be the.
So the only, trying to think, the only interaction I've had at all this year, the thing was popping into my mind. There's some manual training that have to go through the Mekus office. I mean, I don't care to ask this firm if they offer the same training, but I, let's.
Those two.
I thought of them right now. Hey, if they don't offer that, we can go to another state with this training. Is it saying, oh, next year, this is pending, next year? Actually, both of us can say. No, I, I think as long as we have the ability, hey, here's our issue. How familiar are you with this? And, you know, people will be on the side. I've tackled that before. I reckon it's fine. And that's it. I mean, when you're working with Mekus office, just the amount of experience, that's what you're called for. And as far as calling and checking, giving it a shot to, I don't think that's fine.
We're good? Any more discussion? Next item, teachers incentive. We have tried for, I guess, ever since the last meeting to try to do something for the teachers and other school employees. And I don't know, we keep running up against roadblocks. Dr. Dial doesn't think it'll work. And I'm not, I'm not sure that he knows exactly what we want to do. But I have spent considerable amount of time on the phone, talking to people. I've talked to ESEA Finance. They're the ones that handles COVID fund in Jet City. I've talked to Desi and multiple other people. And I have been told verification from two sources that we can't do it.
What do you want to do?
This is what we're wanting to do. I would like to make a motion in view of the difficulties and stress of teaching and working during the continuing pandemic. The district will pay a lump sum incentive payment to all certified and non-certified employees who accept employment for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The incentive shall be paid with their first paycheck of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The incentive payment for certified will be three thousand and the incentive payment for the non-certified will be one thousand.
I'll second that. Motion been made and seconded. Motion made by Dina, seconded by Dan. Discussion. I'm sure there's gonna be some.
Do you know if we can do this? Jason, because I think with this, this is with the SR two funds. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I know there's some stipulations about, you say, you looked into it and you say that we can do this?
Yes, I've got verification from two sources.
What two sources?
I'll tell you one of them. One of them is the in-house counsel for the Teachers Association, for the Teachers Union. IDA or Ms. D. Huh? IDA or Ms. D. IDA. I have another source that works with counties. It took me three days to find. Works with counties and cities and schools on how to spend COVID money. And I can't say who that is, but he gave me the same verification.
So beyond the first, the motion is to make, to give that incentive.
How's that?
First paycheck.
Is it incentive or stipend? How's this?
It says incentive payment.
Incentive.
I've spent a considerable time on the internet looking at the rules and regs and questions and answers and whatnot. And just off the top of my head, one of the things they say is teachers retention. That's a big thing. Due to the stress of working, you know, teachers are thinking about quitting, retiring. And one of the things that they say that in there is to help with teacher retention. They, they gave the school a broad, what's the word I'm looking for? Broad, I think what you're saying is this, a broad path.
Yes.
So. To spend these funds.
So, and again, this doesn't, it's after July one, so it doesn't affect me here. I want, we, you know, we talked the other day about we want to run the teacher pocket. We don't disagree. Nobody, nobody at the table disagrees with that.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah. So my only concern, my hesitation on this piece is on the SR two guidance. It clearly states no bonuses. So that's why we put this contract. That's why we put this thousand dollars in place this year. The SR two funds also require time and effort log. So in order to pay money out of the SR two funds, teachers have to keep a time and effort log of their, what they've done in order, so that will be for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Outside of the regular contract. We, I, so Mr. Dalton and I were at Massa last week. And so we talked to several attorneys as well. And I think there are schools doing this. I'm not arguing that, because I absolutely think they are doing it. My concern is the federal guidance behind it says that you're not supposed to do it. So.
As a bonus.
As a bonus, correct. So I'm not saying you can't do it. I just hesitate to counter, go counter the federal guidance that's supplying the dollars to do it. That's why I ask, we could get, let's let Mr. Dalton and Mrs. Payne bring you a plan. Since we just hired her, that, and she's gonna be in the district on Monday to start to be able to get teachers, money in teacher's pocket. Obviously, this is one-time money. We're, we're trying to come up with a plan for a four or five-year plan with these dollars as well.
Here's, here's what I'm hearing. You don't want to keep these for four, five years. The pandemic may want to go along for another year. And if you try to turn the COVID fund, use COVID fund four and five years out.
No, we will draw it down to next two. We will draw the money down between this year and next year. You're gonna draw it all down. It's gonna be in your bank accounts. It's just how you spend it. It'll, it's gonna be, that part of it's gonna be over because the way we can draw it, it's confusing. That won't be the issue. It's, if somebody squawks, we have to be able to say, okay, this is how we've spent it. And we can track that and be fine with it. It's my only, again, it's after July one, but my concern is this is pretty clearly against the guidance.
So what if we spent the money out of our fund balance?
So just out of general, general revenue balance. Okay?
We got.
Um, yeah.
Six point six million dollars sitting in our fund, total, total fund balance. That's like fifty percent of our budget.
We have, today, now was June, we sent out three, I mean, it will be much lower than that. When we do three, everybody gets three paycheck checks in June. It just, it always looks tight this time of year.
Well, so far in my experience on the board. Here, I looked in April, we're passing the budget in June. You probably don't remember, but I remember June thirteenth, twenty nineteen, I was sitting in your office and I said, we have to do something about teacher pay. At that time, I think it was Oklahoma and two other states, maybe we're having teacher strikes over teacher pay. I've said over and over and over, we need to do more of our teacher pay for two years now. It seems like we always have a budget that says we don't have any money. At the end of the year, we budget a half-million dollar loss. And I've said this over and over. And then at the end of the year, we have two or three, well, we have three or four hundred thousand dollars left over. And that's after we do building improvements that we didn't even budget for. And I realize we're in a COVID deal, so this is not a normal business. And for two years, we've not given teachers really that much of a raise. And the money's been there. The money's there now.
I'm, I'm not objecting to doing something at all. It's just how you do it. I think that we're talking semantics about how you do it.
The thing that bothers me is we always push it down the road. We're gonna do it later and we're gonna do it later. And later never comes for the teachers.
I'm talking about doing it this summer. I mean, from day one, I've said this summer, doing it this summer. I'm not arguing the fact that we need to do that. Remember, I brought you, I brought you the, hey, let's give him this thousand dollars in the fall when we got the ninety thousand from the state. That was me that brought it to the board and wanted to do it. I want the money in their pockets.
But if the money comes out of the general fund. But if the money comes out of the general fund, then the fact that it's, it's an incentive shouldn't be an issue, right?
As long as you, the only case law is you, you have to give it to every employee in the district, no question. I mean, there's, there's case law if you, if you only give it to some. I don't think that's what you're, I think.
My motion is for everybody.
Yeah, I think your motion means everybody.
Even if it's a different sum for everybody, because it was different, wasn't it?
So.
Did, did you? So, here's what I think. I think you guys have presented some, some hard numbers and made a motion, but it doesn't sound like we ran this through our superintendent, assistant superintendent who do the budgeting. I'm not sure what the rush is with this. It's going to happen July. It seems wise to let them make sure that we're all in line with this.
Well, Dr. Dial right now is putting a plan together, and I'm assuming that probably in April, he's going to bring us, he's going to ask us for approval to do the air supply airflow test on the air conditioners and then, and then put out bids for contracts on, on air conditioners. Asbestos in the elementary and, you know, we, we, we need to let him know how much money he's going to have to spend, is what I'm saying.
Yep, I think that's a good idea.
And we got teachers contracts coming up.
And I think that's a good idea, but I think it would be best now because they're going out.
Yeah, teacher contract are coming out now. I mean, if this will help us keep a teacher or two from retiring or quitting. You know, it's going to be well worth while, dude. I mean, that's what it's for.
I agree. What I'm saying is I think the best way to handle this would be to, instead of making a motion to, that we, we do this, we direct Dr. Dial, Mr. Dalton, to put this in the plan and see if this is going to happen and make this happen along with the asbestos.
That's what we did last, last meeting.
And we're, and we're, yeah, and I told you we'd have a plan in the April meeting. After Mrs. Payne got on board, we'd be ready to go with the plan.
Actually. Our last meeting was just a few weeks ago, wasn't it? Two weeks?
Actually, I asked you if you could have something together by like Tuesday or Wednesday the next week, and I think you told me yes, and that was like last week.
But it seems like every time we need to buy a house, we sure can't do that really easily. And I don't know how many houses we bought since I, on my first term, but it's way up there, and a lot of them were forty, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars.
None of them were shit.
And, and by the time we cleaned off the lot, probably had that much in it. And, and it just seems like, and I don't have a problem with that. But I have a problem buying houses and then off the backs of the employees not giving them a raise or giving them money when they need it. I, I don't have a problem with us owning this land and building something on it later. But every time that we proposed a, a raise, even whenever the teachers put a raise in, you know, they were told select from these amounts. And we've chosen to give them more. There's never been an issue. We've come up with the money every time.
I'm not saying I don't want to give teachers money and incentive. I don't think anybody in here does, is saying that. Especially this year, I think we need to give, put money in teachers' pockets. I don't think anybody would argue with that. I just don't know that this is the correct way to do this as a board. And, and, and when you say seventy thousand, I don't know if you know that for sure. I, that seems like that's.
It just seemed like we paid fifty, sixty, and then we had them cleaned off with contractors. Yeah, I think we've gotten close to that.
Just seems a little misleading because you're saying, I think, I'm just saying, because we're, when you're talking about three thousand per teacher and a thousand dollars. I think it's great. I, don't get me wrong, I think it's great. Definitely we need to, it's a good idea to direct them to see how we need to make that happen. But I think it's not wise to not let Dr. Dial and Mr. Dalton budget this first and bring us a plan instead of us just saying this is what we're going to do with the money. Because I don't think, I can't speak for everybody here, but I don't know that any of us know, know these regulations and know these budgeting things as well as they do. Good plan, I mean, to, to, to direct them that this is what we want to do. Can we make this happen? And what's the best way to make this happen? Whether it's take it out of general fund, whether it's use SR2 dollars to do this. I think, I think we can direct Dr. Dial, Mr. Dalton, or Ms. Payne, whenever she comes in, Howard, that, when she comes in next week, is that what you said, that she's going to come? To, to look at this and help this happen. But to do this today without doing that, doesn't seem like that may be the best decision to me.
Can you fit that in your plan?
That's, that's about between four hundred and thirty and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, we, we haven't, we haven't submitted that to DESI. Of course, we can't draw any of that money down until they do the supplemental budget. I mean, you know, just when, last June, you know, we gave those teacher steps back. I can, I can make anything fit. Getting it, it's just how you do it.
The only, the only problem we got is the wording.
I think that's my question. Because again, and I may have, I may have spoken clearly last month when we were talking about it. You know, what I, what I proposed as part of that was something that I know with the language, there's no question about. And I may have misunderstood, but you said earlier that, hey, we don't want to do anything. That, that's not accurate at all. If, if you want to approve a dollar amount, fine. Like you said, we know what to do with that. What I think of when we talk about this, we don't want to mess it up as far as this regs. Okay, I'm, I'm looking around the table. I think I'm the one that works with federal programs here. I know what that looks like. This is federal money. Because this is on a, on a level that we've not done before. You know, I was going to have a conversation with our auditor. We've got a new one. I, I'm interested in, in their input on, hey, what does this need to look like? You know, we just spent half a week having conversations with the private minds in the state when it comes to education, superintendents, DESI folks. And that was, that's the note I wrote down, is this is a unique opportunity in education. Be careful. So, I guess when I might say, hey, those dollar amounts, if, if that's what you want to improve, great. You're still talking about with the first paycheck. You're talking about August. And well, actually, between now and then, we can gain a lot of information from our auditor, from our compliance to make sure we're not doing it wrong. The issue's not the amount.
No.
My question's about, what does that, what does that have to look like to make sure our data is true and right? It's going to be audited.
Let's, let's, yes, it's going to be audited. And let, my thoughts are, let's approve this.
This or the.
And go with the dollar amount and this motion right now, and if we have to change the wording, we can come back at a later date and change the wording.
I'm not comfortable approving the wording if we're questioning it, to be real honest. Like you said, it's federal money. I know only a business, on these guidelines, the small business stuff, you can really strongly, very quickly get yourself in a ringer if you're not careful being with the bank. So, I am not voting on the wording if we're not comfortable with that and we don't have legal advice. I'm afraid the repercussions could be three times as worse. Dollar amount is great. The dollar amount is great.
I'll say again, it's, it's been okayed by two different sources to me. One of them was the in-house counsel for the NDA. And I, I won't say who the other one is, but it's been, it has been okayed too.
So, I called the deputy superintendent, the deputy, the deputy commissioner, Kerry Montes, and asked him the question too. And he strongly advised me not to do it that way.
Why are other schools doing it then? If it's an issue, why are other schools going to be doing it?
I can't answer that either.
And are we sure that those schools might not later get involved?
Again, I want to, I want to do something, absolutely. And if you approve four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's what you, I'm, I'm okay with that. Just let us figure out the plan to get it to them correctly. I mean, I'm figuring off the top, real quick math, it's four thirty-one, two twenty-five. If you want to approve four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to employees, okay, then let me figure out, let us, let us figure out how to get it there.
One thing, that does not count their raise that we're going to.
No, no, I understand that.
This is in addition to?
I understand that.
Okay.
I never thought that. I just wanted to. Never thought that.
On a, on a one-time deal.
Yeah. If that's what you want to do, that's fine. That, you can choose to, as a board, you can choose to do what you want to do. If you, the dollar amount's easier to deal with than doing this and this. And then we'll come back with, hey, this has been approved from DESI and commutiate her who actually is the, the federal person in DESI. If we give her the plan and she says yes, and I'm comfortable, it gets through the ballot. But you guys do it. I mean, it's up to you.
So, I have to amend the motion. Is that what it's called?
You have to amend, or you have to withdraw it, make a amendment.
Then we have to retract it.
Then we have to retract it.
We're going to, we're going to amend it.
Oh, Dana, do you have to withdraw in a second?
What do you want to do? Want to amend it or you want to?
Wanted.
You can amend the motion to.
To a lot, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, you got to split it up. You got to go three thousand to the teachers, one thousand to non-certified. Three thousand certified, one thousand to non-certified, repaid with the first paycheck.
Well, we don't know that though. That's what Dr. Dial's saying.
Incentive.
I don't think the timeframe is issued, but I think it's the wording.
So, don't use incentive.
You want to approve.
Do we even need a motion for this? Maybe just the board just say, ask Dr. Dial.
If we're going to spend that kind of money, we have to.
Ask Dr. Dial to come up with something that, that has that, that money in there?
No, we, if we're going to approve, we have to approve that kind of money. Yeah.
No, it's just, it's for not spending that money. Come up with a plan to come that shows how we're going to spend it.
What we're going to put that, that amount of money aside for the teachers.
And let them figure out how to do it.
For certified and non-certified.
We're agreeing to the amount.
So, you're agreeing to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I'm in, three thousand certified, thousand non-certified.
Are we going to put a contingent on them coming back to workforce? Or are we just going to make a payment to them?
Well, that.
Because right now it's contingent to them.
It will be, it will be.
It will be with their first paycheck.
Yeah, it will be after they, they sign the contract, so yes. We got that amendment figured out.
Just a second. Okay, I'm a numbers person, not a word person.
How about if I help you?
No, I'm good now.
Okay, go ahead.
Just give me a minute, okay?
I want to draw a motion. We'll draw in a second. I'll draw it. We don't have to know.
Dan withdrew his.
Get him to draw in a second so she can change it.
Dan withdrew this second.
Okay.
Okay, now I can amend it.
Amend it.
Okay, okay, I'm amending the motion that I made. And in view of the difficulties and stress of teaching and working during the continuing pandemic, the district will pay lump sum to all certified and non-certified employees who accept employment for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. They will be paid with their first paycheck of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Certified will be three thousand payment and non-certified will be a thousand. That's my motion.
Word?
If it doesn't, I'll bring it back to you.
Motion had been amended. We have a second from Dan. Any more discussion?
So, that's doable?
I don't know. I'll, I'll find out.
And the wording, do you think that could get us any?
I don't know. I'll find out.
Okay, if they can, so if it can, if it can get us involved with making this motion, is it as simple as just changing it?
Yeah, because it's before you pay it out.
Okay.
As long as you're going to pay it out. I mean, you're going to pay it out. I have no issues with the four fifty. That's not what I'm saying. It's just how you pay it out.
And that's what, that's what you guys, yeah, figure out?
Yeah.
And the wording is okay with this? It wouldn't get us, if we need to change wording or something, we can still go back and do that without it? Okay?
Any more discussion? All those in favor? All overpoaded. Stay. At six, four and one abstaining. Motion carried. Any other anything else? Need a motion to adjourn and go into closed. Charlie makes the motion. Do we have a second? They have seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Seven figures.